Good morning. And welcome to our January 15th Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to ask Mr. Wayne Acock to provide his indication, followed by the place lead by Mr. Ray Mayo.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Honor and Father, thank you for today. Thank you for your many blessings. We ask that you lead and guide us in the decisions that we make for Wayne County today. Sometimes that we have differences of opinions, but at the day's end, we're all on the same page and perform to protect and serve the citizens of Wayne County. And we ask that our leaders in Raleigh and Washington take the same path, to remember what they were elected for is to represent the citizens of this state and this great nation, and to not be on a personal agenda of their own, to remember while they're in that position. Also, we want to remember the police officer in Raleigh, the trooper in Wilson County last night. Our prayers are with them and their families. We live in a crazy society this day and time, and let's keep all of our first responders, whether it's law enforcement, EMS, fire, let's keep them in our prayers, because we live in a changing world, and they get no respect now for the job that they do, to lay their life on the line for us. So let's keep all of them in our prayers. Also, let's keep our men and women in uniform in our prayers, especially the ones that are deployed and be with their families, the ones that are deployed be with their families back home, as they struggle sometimes with the fact that their loved ones are in harm's We just want to thank you for all that you do for us, be with our employees of the county. Some are dealing with sickness and loss of loved ones, be with them. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I trust everyone's had a chance to review the minutes. Do I have approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve any discussion. All in favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Discussion, adjustment, agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have one walk-on and one item we want to move from consent to new business. The walk-on would be a resolution in support of Shriners Day in Wayne County for January 26th. Mr. George Raker will be here as well for that presentation. And then, under currently our consent agenda, number nine, motion to award RFQ for architectural services for the adaptive reuse of property located at 210 Dixie Trail, Goldsboro, to Skinner-Farlow-Kerwin Architecture. We would move that under new business.
Does any commissioner have anything to add or delete?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion approved. Thank you. All right, special presentation. If I can ask Board of Commissioners to line up down front, please. this morning, as chairman of our Board of Commissioners for the past two years. You've done an outstanding job, and I appreciate everything you've done for me, and especially the past month. I appreciate your continued service. One piece of advice I would give you as you hang this in the house, get out of arms' length of this paper, because that could warp a good knot on your head. Anyway, Bill, thank you for your stuff.
And it gives me great pleasure to turn a chairmanship over to you. Now, all kidding aside, I really appreciated the support I had from everybody, and it was interesting, and it was difficult at times, but well worth it. Thank you.
Yes, since you're here, we do have a resolution that's been requested, Mr. Raker, and I apologize if I said your name wrong, request from the Sudan Shriners here in Wayne County. Whereas the Sudan Shriners of North Carolina was established July 13th, 1916, and whereas since December 5th, 1917, the annual winter ceremonial and election of officers has been held in New Bern, North Carolina, and whereas in September 2018, Hurricane Florence devastated the facilities of the Sudan, as well as many areas of New Bern, and whereas the Sudan's jurisdiction includes 40 Shriner clubs, 4,200 members, and over 540 children as patients from the area of the Virginia border to South Carolina, east of Interstate 95, being cared for through Shriners Hospital for Children, and whereas the Sudan Shriners Winter Ceremonial and Election of Officers will be held in Goldsboro, North Carolina, on Friday, January 25th, 2019, and Saturday, January 26th, 2019, and whereas the annual Shriner's Parade will be held in downtown Goldsboro, North Carolina, at 12:00 PM on Saturday, January 26th, 2019. Now, therefore it be resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 26th, 2019, as Sudan Shriners Day in Wayne County, and urges every citizen to attend the Shriner's Parade on January 26th, 2019, at 12:00 PM in downtown Goldsboro. Adopted this the 15th day of January 2019. Need a motion to approve?
That was the Republican Sudan Shriners on the phone.
Motion to approve any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion approved. Mr. Raker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley. Appreciate the proclamation for Sudan Shriners. This is the first time in over 100 years that this event has been held outside the city of New Bern due to the destruction of Florence Hurricane. And Goldsboro was selected, and we're going to do a good job, because we want the Shriners to come back to Goldsboro, and we appreciate the city and the county. We have 100% support for everybody we're dealing with, and I appreciate this. Thank you very much. I present one of the 200 Shriners International Temples, and we are the owners of the Shriners Hospital for Children, so thank you for all your support.
Mr. Chairman, I might make a comment here. This is actually the first large event that we've had, have, or going to have, at the national center, and it's nice to see that a plan comes together. That said, we want everybody to roll out in the streets, because we definitely want to keep this here in Goldsboro and move it from New Bern. We have a fantastic parade scheduled, weather permitting. Let's hope the weather stays good for us. We have over 40 units that are all shrine units. Most people in here have seen the Sudan many raids here before. We have several motorized units. Our shrine clown unit out of Dunn is the 2018 Shriners International Champions. They went to Daytona, participated in the parade and competition, and they definitely will be here. They will enlighten young adults, and thank you to everybody, and ask that everybody support our event from 2027 to 2026. This proclamation will be read by Mr. Gurley and presented to the general membership on Friday night at the national center on our opening ceremony. Again, thank you very much.
Welcome. Stay here now.
down. The reason why is we want you to come and stand up here with your backs facing the commissioners after you receive your pins, so we can get a group photo. We've been trying to do that for some time at our Public Affairs Office to you, so if you will stay up here, then the commissioners will recognize you afterwards. All right, we'll begin with the one-year service pins, the first one being Alia Bailey from DSS Income Maintenance. Michael Forbes, Facilities. Antonio Harris, DSS Regular Services. Caroline Joyner, DSS Regular Services. Louis T. Pate with the Sheriff's Office. Angela Wallace-Wiggins, Health Child Services. Teresa M. Clark, Health Family Planning. Dylan Corbett with the Sheriff's Office, Dylan Corbett. Janice Jones with the Library. Ninja Payne with the Jail. Catherine Pierce, Staff Attorney's Office. Alexander Torres with the Sheriff's Office. Myra Wiley, DSS Income Maintenance. All right, moving on to the five-year pins. And we'll begin with Taryn Barden with the Jail. Francis R. Head, DSS Administration. And Crystal Lemon, DSS Regular Services. All righty then. Next will be our 10-year pins. Brian Precise, Sheriff's Office. And Sherri Robertson, DSS Administration. And now our 15-year pin, and that is going to Mr. Charles Schaefer with the Sheriff's Last but not least, our 20-year service pins, and we'll begin with Bonnie Clark, DSS Income Michelle Lowry, DSS Regular Services. Ginger Williams, DSS Income Maintenance. Alan D. Moore with Environmental Health. And Josie Rayner with Health Department, TB. I don't know what that means. All right, and now if you want to get your photos. All right, we're good? All right, and Mr. Chairman, did you want them to turn around so you can speak to them?
Yes, we each of you. Thank you for your service. This is a little different than what we have been doing in the past, so maybe as we go along, we get a little more fluid with it, but thank you all for your service. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So next, we have the Sheriff making a presentation to retired Sergeant Carter Hicks. Lieutenant, I always like to come Sergeant Carter.
Once again, it gives me pleasure and a little bit of teary eyed, but he's one of my top people. He's employed with us a couple more weeks. He's taken some vacation time, and I think he's going to come back and work a while with us as part time. If he don't go into singing, he's got that Barry White voice, and so we'll see if he... But Lieutenant, I'd like to present to Carter Hicks, Sheriff's Office, in appreciation of dedicated services as a county employee, February 7th, 1996, December 31st, 2018. It's great to appreciate the job you've done, and thank you for all your service.
Thank you, sir.
Also, I have your service weapon that you carried in the protection of our citizens of Wayne County for so many years. It says, "Lieutenant Carter Hicks, for meritorious service, dedication, loyalty, friendship, and professionalism that you have demonstrated during your career. Your presence will be missed, but your accomplishments will not be forgotten." Thank you again so much.
Thank you, sir.
And this is the resolution, and Mr. Chairman, I have it here that will be presented to give him his weapon. Make a motion.
Motion made. Any discussion? All in favor, please, sir. Right hand.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yes, Sheriff, thank you. I'd like to thank the sheriff person and the board for giving me this time to be presenting my duty weapon. I also like to thank God for keeping me safe to even be here to stand before you. I'd like to thank my wife, Levon, for putting up with me for all these years. It's been tough, but most of all, I'd like to thank the sheriff of Wayne County, he's given me an opportunity to work at his leisure. Worked up on the two sheriffs, Kerry Winters and Sheriff Pierce, both great men and grateful to the state of North Carolina. I'd like to thank my guys that I've worked with over the years who's had my back. I couldn't do it without them. And I also like to thank the wanted vision. I was in charge of that, and they're a great group of guys. Couldn't ask for any better. I think that's all I have to say.
While I'm standing up here, if it's okay, I'd like to introduce to another gentleman who received a state award, if that's okay. Corporal Bachelor, come on. The DWI Task Force was mentioned earlier when Sergeant Jason Hill was up here, and I just wanted to let the board know that we have what is known as the Drug Recognition Experts. We have two in our county, which Corporal Bachelor is one of, and this time during the conference, he went to, he received the top award in North Carolina for Sheriff's Office Drug Recognition Expert, and I just wanted to show you the award he got and commend him for the job he's doing. If you have any questions on what a drug recognition expert is, he'll be glad to share with you, because it is a grueling ordeal to get that certification.
Do you have any questions about... Well, I'll kind of give you an overview. To become a drug recognition expert, you have to be handselated, you have to put in a tedious and vigorous application process. Application was approximately an inch thick in paperwork. From there, once you're handselated, you go to a preschool. It's the first school I ever seen where the second day, they shook five people's hands and sent them home. They are very strict on their rules. From there, you go through two weeks. You have to pass a test at their minimum of 85% accuracy. From there, you go to a field certification. You have to actually, what we do, we evaluate drug impairment drivers. Any other deputies, they're trained for alcohol, but drug impairment, it's harder to detect. You can't really smell it a lot of times. So from there, we actually have to go through a field evaluation, evaluate at least 12 people, and what we do, we go to the Wake County Jail, where they have their weekenders, and sad to say, a lot of them dose up before they go to weekend jail. So we evaluate them, and we have to call it correctly. From there, we have a comprehensive test that took me approximately eight hours to complete it. It's handwritten, they give you a legal pad, and they tell you the answer. It helps the task force a lot. We're talking about the numbers for fatalities, just Sergeant Hill was. Drug impairment has surpassed alcohol impairment, and with this, not just anyone could do this, part of application is being recommended by the sheriff, the district attorney's office, and other DREs. And with the, I think the sheriff mentioned a fuel crisis with that, we're seeing a lot of methamphetamine now, and with the fatalities increasing, and the drug impairment increasing, this is a strong part of the DWI Task Force.
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not asking you to give us absolute statistics.
Yes, sir.
But comparatively speaking, and about accidents and things along the road, Sheriff, are we dealing with more alcohol-related accidents, or, just to pick one, marijuana-based impairment that causes accidents?
Well, in 2016 and '17 is what they've come out, the statistics for, and what they're finding, the per se limit for alcohol is point zero eight, which you could be impaired at a lower level, or you could have drug impairment there. What they're finding is drug impairment such as marijuana, heroin, or what we call poly-drug use, that's where they use more than one drug. They might be using alcohol and marijuana. So when they're taking blood, the blood samples and collections has surpassed actual breath testing in North Carolina. So that's where, yes, the numbers are going higher, and that's with alcohol, all of it together, the drugs combined in it.
We're actually finding people send stop signs with needles in their arms all the time now, where they're passed out, drug impairment.
Can I give you an overview? Someone that smokes marijuana, it's a very, you mentioned marijuana, it's looked at as being legalized across the nation. A lot of these states that have legalized are seeing epidemic, but they're seeing it with impaired driving, because it's just like alcohol. There's no per se limit on marijuana, but it affects each person differently. That's why we do these evaluations, these tests, to determine if they are in fact impaired. But you can drink alcohol, you can smoke marijuana, and not be impaired. So that's the big reason of this program right here. And the fellow mentioned, the DRE coordinator for the state for forensic test of alcohol, he is applying for a grant to reimburse DREs that are certified, because as of right now, the sheriff is allowed, I'm on call, if a deputy that has less experience comes across a sleepy driver that he thinks may be impaired, may find some kind of drugs or drug paraphernalia, I could be called out. And right now, since the drug impairment has gone up so high, we're applying for a grant, or the state is, to reimburse DREs to come out at a time and a half rate.
I don't want to oversimplify my question, but if you're riding down the road, and there's one guy that's had consumption of alcohol, another one has a consumption of marijuana, is there such a thing as the worst one to meet? I mean, now, if he crosses your lane, it doesn't matter, but I'm talking about the one that might be able to keep from hitting you the most, or the least. That's what I'm getting at. Which is the most dangerous on the road that we meet?
There is no most dangerous. This is all dangerous. This is all dangerous. I mean, I can't give you a definitive answer there.
No answer. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say one thing. Commissioner Acock, thank you for remembering our law enforcement officers that were shot in line of duty this week. Please keep those in your prayer, the public as well. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Next, we have Ms. Paula Edwards, our Service on Asian Director, for presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hope everyone is well in this new year. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. My reason for being here is just to share a couple events, special events that we have scheduled at the Peggy Seeger Senior Center, and to talk about senior games. The Wayne County Arts Council has a grassroots arts program subgrant that is sponsoring a couple of the events that will be held at the Peggy Seeger Senior Center. One is to celebrate the Valentines. Starlight Dance Band will be performing on Friday, February 8th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. There's another event to celebrate... There's another event to celebrate Black History Month. We'll have the Monitors, and they will perform on Friday, February the 22nd, from 7:00 to 9:00. Both events are free and open to individuals that are 50 years of age or older. And then we have Senior Games Health Fair, and that will be the first Friday in February, which is February the 1st, from 9:30 in the morning until 12:00 p.m. at the Peggy Seeger Senior Center. And this is a kickoff event for the Senior Games, which is coming up shortly. We'll have registration forms there to sign up for any game that you'd like to participate. And we also encourage anyone that is listening, public or the commissioners, if you'd like to participate. We will have free health screenings, such as skin cancer, hearing, vision, and several other, blood sugar, blood pressure checks. We'll have approximately 30 or so vendors present that will have information related to health of seniors. We'll offer a free bag lunch during this event and some door prizes. And this is free and open to the public. And today, I do have with me Stacia Fields from Goldsboro Parks and Rec, and Ambassador Pauline, that's the ambassador for the Senior Games. And they're going to be here to tell you a little bit about senior games. So I'm going to just have them to step up, and I'll step back as they talk to you about senior games.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here again this year. I am so excited about senior games, and I know last year and in previous years, I've invited you guys all to come out and play with us. So the invitation still stands. I think everyone looks like they would qualify age-wise to be in senior games. Senior Games is for anyone 50 and above. It will take place the month of April, but like Paula said, we're having our health fair and our big open house for senior games, February 1st. And that's when our registration forms will be hot off the press. You'll have the whole month of February to register, and then we use the month of March to get everything in the computer, T-shirts ordered, everything ready for our games. Pauline Gassoay with me today is one of our ambassadors. We do have Terry Wright, that is a great volunteer at the Senior Center, also as an ambassador. And we're getting ready to train a new ambassador through the state office in Raleigh, and that is Janice Simmons. So we'll be back up to our three ambassadors that we really love to have. And these ladies are such great help to me in going out and spreading the word about senior games. Senior Games is a health and wellness activity. Like I said, it does last the whole month of April, and we do all kinds of fun and competitive athletic events. Some of them are just as simple as our backyard events, like football throw, softball throw. We've got croquet, embocce. And then we've got all of the track events, 5K races, 100-meter dashes, all kinds of things that you do at a track event, shot put, discus. Those are a little bit more competitive, but we're all there in the good spirit of fun and fellowship. Let me see. It's so much fun. Senior Games is broken down into five-year age increments, so you 50-year-olds will not have to worry about competing with 70-year-olds. It's 50 to 55, 55 to 54, 55 to 59, and on. So a lot of times, you'll be able to compete against your same friends year after year. You might not see them any other time throughout the year, but when you get together for senior games, you know you're going to be competing against your same buddies. And it is just a lot of, lot of fun. And it's so heartwarming to see the participants that do participate from year to year. We have about 300 participants. And one of my favorite stories, and I hope I didn't share this with you last year, but we have a woman named Irene, and she was in a track event. She's in her early 80s, was in our 100-meter dash. She fell at the Senior Center, broke a tooth, got all banged up, got right back up, and was ready to keep on going. We were rushing to her to help her into the center. She was like turned, said no, she wanted to keep finishing that race. That did not happen, but she did do all of her other events throughout the month of the games. And stories like that and getting to meet the seniors and see the enjoyment on their faces, that's just what makes it great for all of us that work with the games. So that's why we're here. Yes, you can say that. And so I'm going to pass it on over to Pauline.
Well, thank you. Here we are again. Good morning, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. Thank you for having us again. 2018 year was amazing, and we hope to succeed that for 2019. Before I get into the ambassador role, let me just read this quote. It was read in the 2018 Senior Games at the Senior Center. And this will give you the complete overall view of what the senior games are. Senior Games is a holistic approach to body, mind, and spirit staying fit while enjoying the company of friends, family, spectators, and volunteers, end quote. So I just wanted to read that this morning to let you all know that the NC Senior Games, Wayne County Games are an avenue for the 50 or better, excuse me, to participate. It gives the seniors a chance to venture out of the homes, to fellowship with other seniors, to have face-to-face communication, and also to realize that at 50 or better, we are just starting, pretty much. There's so much left to do. I always look forward to it. I'm approaching 70, and I just love it. I mean, it's a way of me to like venture out there and say, yeah, I can still do this. And I'm a physical person. I love the activities. I love the, as I said before, the fellowship. And we hope that you might have a moment to join us, even if it's just to go out and observe and see what the seniors in our community are capable of doing. I cannot speak highly enough of being an ambassador. And it's not just me. We have three, as Stacia just mentioned. We have one who is pretty much stationed there at the Senior Center. She's great, Terry Wright. And she does her thing there. And the majority of the seniors, you know, there's a lot of seniors there, and she are there to have them have access to the registration forms and to provide them with information or changes. And also, one of the most famous participant groups is the Chorus, right?
The Songbirds.
The Songbirds, and they're terrific. So that is pretty much Terry Wright's position. And she does other things, you know. There are three of us, but we work as a team. We have certain roles that each of us like to do. I like to present. I like to go around to the communities, to the senior housing, and about 15 minutes, maybe about 15 minutes, I speak to them about the games and what they can receive from participation. And then I take out a visual, and I show them the participants from the prior year. And then you start to see the little smiles on the faces, and then they begin to say, she's 95? I say, oh, yeah, and she crossed the finish line. And they just love it. So the games each year is something that Goldsboro and Wayne County should be really proud of. You know, it started back in 1986, over all the games. And then in Goldsboro area, it started in 1995. So we are lucky to have this event every year. And it's for the whole month of April. And we will have the registration forms out, as Stacia mentioned, started in March.
February 1st.
I'm sorry. February 1st. So everything will be out there, and we're hoping to exceed the 300 mark. I believe it was like 341 last year. So we hope to go even higher. So now, as an ambassador, as I stated earlier, I like to present, but other things we do as a group, we promote the games, we deal with the publicity through the media, whether that be the Goldsboro August newspaper. They'll come out, they'll do interview, especially of the new ambassador. Ask question, why are you an ambassador? And that is wonderful feedback to the community. As stated, I do presentations. Not everyone liked the presentation mode, but there are so many other things with the Senior Center that they can do. We set up practice sessions at the Senior Center, like in the area of shuffleboard, so the seniors can get prior experience before the games actually start. We have the billiards up there. So not only do I, do we, I should say, try to make this lady's job easier. Who is the coordinator for the special games, but also this lady, who is the Senior Center director, we assist with her too, because we all work as a team. And we just want to say thank you very much, and please join us if you can, and we appreciate everything that the community is receiving from the senior games. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I want to invite you again to be part of our games, and thank you for letting us use the beautiful Senior Center to host our opening ceremonies, our shuffleboard, and our health fair that's coming up. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions?
Well, just a comment. Serving on the board at the Senior Citizens Center, I always like to say this to the public, it is a wonderful, wonderful facility. The folk that I see when I'm down there, they are thoroughly enjoying it, actively in the card games and the billiards, and I'm sure the pros just down there call it shooting pool. I peep in sometimes, but I don't get too close because I don't want anyone to think that I think that I qualify to go in there and shoot with them. So I just sort of look in and keep on going. I was tempted to make a smart comment because I was listening for all the things that you were reading, and I thought I never did hear anything about flag football for the over 70-year-olds.
Well, we could get that started.
But we do have the football throw. And it's not that easy getting it through that little round tube.
That's true. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have our public comments time. Being one from the audience, like to stand up and, you have four minutes.
Mr. Chairman, there's a sheet up there. I need them to put their name. It's on the podium with the pen. I need them to put their name, because sometimes I don't understand their name well enough.
So anyone?
Put their name and number down.
They say the beginning is a good place to start. Comments were made about me at the December meeting that I feel must be addressed. One commissioner stated that communication is key, and further stated that Mr. Lewis truly feels that he has been discriminated against. First of all, I'm so far from a mistress, pathetic. Second, I've never said that I've been discriminated against. I've stated that I believe the rule was unfairly applied and on more than one occasion. If that is the same as discrimination, so be it. The same commissioner asked if someone can reach out to me, and I believe him to be sincere. But he made the same comment June 7th, 2016, and like then, no one has reached out to me. Another commissioner states that I have never spoken to him. This comment is absurd. The evidence I present will prove that I have spoken to him on more than one occasion. When I stand before you at this podium, I speak collectively as a group and individually as commissioners. This dumb son of a lieutenant former believes if I spoke to you in person, I shouldn't have to call you. This commissioner further states that he doesn't mind going to my house, sitting down, and talking with me, and asked to be kept in the loop as to progress after someone being asked to reach out to me. No one has. The clerk for the board states that we gave him misfearment. I do not know how we are hurting his business. The laws of chivalry and decency forbid me to argue with a woman, but those same laws require me to argue for others. Evidence that I present will show that this administration's actions, or inaction more appropriately, have harmed a hungry child as well as a struggling single parent, the sick as well as the healthy, the young as well as the old. Another commissioner states that I have been late with my requests on numerous occasions. He asked the board chairman if that is correct, to which the chairman replies, yes. This will be hard for me to refute because it involves opinion, and opinions are neither right nor wrong. They are simply opinions. Members of this board are entitled to theirs as I am mine. The evidence I present will show that the board or its agents have been confused on more than one occasion. This policy is vague. High courts have ruled that some laws are unconstitutional for the same reason. Examples I can give are the recent bans on immigration, redistricting, and the recent amendments to our state constitution, to name a few. When I appear before you on the 5th of next month, I will be using videos of the commissioner's meeting on June 7th, 2016. The part I use will begin at 2 hours, 3 minutes, and 15 seconds in the YouTube video. I will also use a phone conversation with an agent for the county that took place on June 15th, 2016, as well as a conversation with a county agent that took place on June 25th, 2016. I give you this information so that you will not be blindsided. See you on the 5th.
Anyone else? If not, public comments time, scene closed. Okay, Mr. Park, don't let me go too fast here and run past something. We're going to recess the board of commissioners meeting and convene the Wayne County Board of Adjustment meeting for discussion of the special use permit for Summit Solar LLC Solar Energy Facility at 245 Everett Road, Mount Olive, North Carolina. Does anyone wish to speak at this time?
Barry.
Barry, I'm sorry. I didn't see you over there.
The special use case today is a solar energy facility located at 16, excuse me, located on 16.79 acres. This is on Everett Road between the old Mount Olive Highway and Kelly Springs Road. It's actually on the north side or northwest side, depending on how you look at it, of Everett Road. The applicant is Strata Solar. The owners are Joyce Smith Coats and Everett A. Coats. This site is within the airspace control surface area with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, and because of that, it did require that it come forward as a special use. So that is why it is here before the Board of Adjustment today. Since it is a special use, that does require that the board consider evidence that the use meets the findings of facts. Now, the applicant is preparing to go through the findings of facts with you in a few minutes, so as not to be repetitive, I'll let her mention those and go through those with you. But they are in your information at your seat for reference. Additionally, the county does have on file, we do have the property impact study on file that was performed by the applicant, as well as a solar glare analysis. And we did receive comments from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base that there were no impacts as a result of that. Also, there is a, if you look at the site plan, which is on the screen here as well, and I know at that scale, it may be hard to see, and if you do need larger copies, I do have some large copies here that I can pass out if anybody would want one. But you see this here, there is, there are about three or four homes on Everett Road that kind of back up to this property. There is a riparian buffer between the facility and those homes. A riparian buffer is basically a creek that has, with trees 50 feet on both sides. Those buffers typically, or they cannot be disturbed. And in the most case in this area, that buffer is in place. There's one area where it's thin behind one of the homes, and that area the applicant is proposing... is proposing to put in a vegetated buffer on the solar energy side to account for that thinning of that buffer in that area. But whatever's in place in the other areas along that riparian buffer, by state statute, you cannot be disturbed. So that buffer will, will stay in place. Part of it's on this property, part of it, I think, is on some of the neighboring property as well, but it is a fairly good buffer. But like I said, there is one property where it's thinned, where, where they will be putting in a buffer there. We did send out notices. They were mailed to adjacent property owners. We also posted a sign on the property as required by state statute, and we have advertised in the newspaper as well. And with that said, the applicant is here, as I mentioned, to respond and ask, answer any questions also. And finally, the planning board did review this, and the planning board did recommend approval of the site plan. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I'm good. I'm good. Good.
My name is Karen Kimmerite. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild in Raleigh, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I have several witnesses, and I thought it would, we could all be sworn in at the same time.
You still have to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so you got.
Thank you.
And if you could put your names on the public hearing list when you get a moment, that would be perfect. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, and members of the board. Again, my name is Karen Kimmerite with the law firm of Fox Rothschild in Raleigh, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Summit Solar LLC and Strata Solar. I'm also here on behalf of the property owners, Joyce and Everett Coats, and they're sitting on the middle row with their family, and they're here in support of the application. I'll take just a few minutes. I'll be fairly brief because there has been no concern or opposition to our application. And we also received a unanimous recommendation for approval to this board from the planning board. But I'd like to go through the standards to demonstrate how we have, our application meets all of the requirements for issuance of the special use permit. As Barry mentioned, the property is located north of Everett Road and about 1,000 feet east of old Mount Olive Highway. The adjacent properties are a mix of agricultural and residential uses, and the property is located within the interhorizontal overlay district. The property is, the, the parent parcel is 59.67 acres, and it's currently used for agricultural purposes. A small portion of the property, about 16.79 acres, will be used for the solar farm, and the plan is to develop the property, that portion of the property, as a 3-megawatt solar farm. A special use permit is required to be issued by this board because the property is located within the outer horizontal surface area of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. As Barry mentioned, the Department of Air Force has reviewed this application, and it specifically reviewed the glare analysis report that we provided. And the Air Force provided a letter on November the 21st, and it stated that the solar farm is compatible with its protocol, so there is no concerns from the Air Force. I'd like to move on and provide some information from our application that demonstrates that all of the county's requirements for the special use permit have been met by our application. First, we've provided information that the solar farm does not adversely affect the general plans for physical development of the county and will not be contrary to the purposes stated in the regulations. The solar farm is permitted with the special use permit in the interhorizontal overlay district. Our site plans and our application demonstrate that the solar farm will comply with all of the solar energy facility requirements and also the general requirements for issuance of the special use permit. Also, we are in compliance with the comprehensive plan and especially Section 2 of the comprehensive plan that deals with economic development for the county. Secondly, our application demonstrates that the solar farm will not adversely affect the health or safety of the county residents and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. The solar farm is a passive use that receives sunlight and produces solar energy. It's a clean and expensive and unlimited resource with little environmental impact. It's also an extremely low-impact use, and it will not endanger the public health or safety due to traffic, noise, environmental considerations, or light pollution. And in regard to traffic, it's an unmanned facility, and it will generate very minimal traffic, only about one to two vehicle trips per month. The solar farm will not produce any odor, noise, or glare, and it does not emit emissions. It will also not produce any type of toxic or hazardous waste, and the solar farm does not contain any hazardous material or substances. And in regard to light pollution, there will be no light pollution because obviously, a solar farm is completely dark in the evenings. We have also provided a property impact report that's been prepared by Kirkland Appraisals, which is a North Carolina certified real estate appraiser. And Mr. Kirkland prepared a matched payer analysis, and in his expert opinion, he has stated that the solar farm will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties, and that will also blend in with the area and be in harmony with the area. We also presented evidence that the solar farm will be placed on a lot of sufficient size to satisfy the space requirements. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the solar farm will be located on only about 17 acres of the 60-acre parcel. And then finally, we presented information that the solar farm will not constitute a hazard or nuisance due to the number of people who use the facility, the vehicular movement, or the noise or fume generation. And again, I'll just quickly repeat, it's an extremely low-impact use, and it will not constitute a nuisance or hazard due to traffic, noise, or environmental considerations. So I've gone through it, I think, pretty good detail what our application states, and I'd ask that our application be admitted into evidence. And we have a number of witnesses who can answer any specific questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay. Much pleasure, the board.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve and in discussion. No discussion. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. All right. Now, we're going to adjourn the Wayne County Board of Adjustment meeting and reconvene the board of commissioners' meeting. And we'll begin with the appointment committee, Mr. Acock.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have several today. First one is the JCPC appointments. I have six names to submit to the board. Marlene Hubbell, Jordan Wildman, Casey Jones, Inja Pace, Beth Heath, and Selena Whirl. And that is in the form of a motion from the appointment committee.
All right. Form of motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Motion carried.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we have an appointment, or reappointment to the Wayne County Development Alliance, and we would like to reappoint Ms. Barbara Acock as in form of a motion.
Okay. Anybody here to form a motion? All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand.
And the last one, Mr. Chairman, Wayne County Public Library Board of Advisors, Ms. Charlotte Brier. That's the form of a motion.
All right. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Motion carried. Thank you.
That's it today, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Honeycutt, do you wish to take care of the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. As we discussed during the agenda discussion, we have gone over, if there's any questions with respect to the consent agenda, but again, number nine, we are now placing under new business.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion made to approve consent agenda, any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Motion approved. Now, new business, Mr. Honeycutt.
Ashley, would you like to do the stream?
That was really good time.
That was great.
All right. Good morning. I was just going to give you all a brief update on how far we've made it and what we're looking to do next on the stream cleanout. So part one and two. We are still working on part one and two. We have about three segments left. Of those three segments, from Heron Road to US 13 out at Grantham, they've completed that, but they need to go back through and kind of touch it up because of Florence, so we can get an inspector in here to check it. They're back behind Hood Drive working now, and they have completed from Old Grantham Road to Stevens Mill Road, but they're going to go back through and touch it up because it was done right before Florence. So, um, the inspectors agreed to come back down and check those. We can check them off our list. And then however long it takes them, basically from 13 to Old Grantham, which is a pretty good stretch, and it is, there's a lot of debris and stuff in there, so it's kind of hard to say how long that'll take exactly. And then from Stevens Mill to, to the noose itself, that part you can't get in right now because the noose is high enough that it's backed up really bad. So part one is coming along pretty good. We're hoping to finish that in the next month or two, weather permitting. All the rain we've had has definitely taken a toll on how fast we can work and where we can go. These are just a few pictures. This was back behind Hood Drive. The picture on the left was a big Beaver Dam, and that's kind of a before and after they took the dam out. So it definitely had held a lot of water up there at, at 13 at the time. And this is Fallen Creek. It's between Old Grantham Road and Beaver Dam Road. You can kind of see some before and after pictures of all the debris and stuff that they have found and then cleaning it out. Part three, AK Grading, that is doing part one and two, they also won the bid for part three. So as soon as they come closer to finishing part one and two, we'll look at getting them to sign the contract to actually do part three, which includes the ones listed here, Little River being one of them. Little River's really high right now, too, because I crossed over that last week. But it's about 22 miles or so of part three that we're, that we're looking to do. And then, um, this is just a map kind of showing all the areas, part one through three, that we've done so far. Part four is what we just bid out and is on your agenda today. It's kind of hard to say, there's a lot more we want to get done, but we wanted to go ahead and do some of the smaller sections of part four so that we could keep the ball rolling. We have to be finished with the money by the end of December, so we're hoping to get started with them in the next month or so, if we can. Part four is a section out at Walnut Creek. It's Popular Branch at Rolandwood Subdivision that we've had a lot of calls from out there. They've had water damage back at Matthew. They had it again at Florence. And then there's Powell, there's a blue line at Powell Road that goes over and feeds into Walnut Creek as well. There's a blue line at Lafayette Park that feeds back into Popular Branch. So even though out there at Rolandwood comes down, there's, there's a piece that feeds into it. So that worked out well. We had some calls there that it feeds back into an area we were already doing. And then out at Peel Acres, there was another area. This map just shows part four, the parts of the county that we are looking to do. And then our, of course, our funders that we're dealing with. We still have some money left. There's some other areas we want to reach. We just haven't kind of broadcasted them yet to get anybody's hopes up. It just kind of depends on how far the money reaches, how many more areas we'll get to do. Any questions?
And, board, I really do want to thank Ashley and her staff for the work that she's done. And this grant work is above and beyond her normal work and how much she is really committed to making sure this is done and done right and bid out correctly and the help of Noel. So I do want to publicly thank her for the work that she's done on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Ashley.
I'd like to add that little thank you in there. She's made people that I know personally happy because it's reaching into the areas where they live, and natural that is a concern for everyone. I have received pictures from residents in that area where they were having significant situations with flooding. Anything that we can do that will relieve that, especially folk are dealing with, I think, from Matthew and Florence. If you've never visited in a house where someone, house had flooded up to four feet and they having to take out all the, it's awful. It's tough. It's tough. Thank you, Ashley.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion to approve part four?
So moved.
Motion made, discussion. No discussion. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand.
Next is Paul. Paul was not here. We've been working with Paul Roer with Mount Olive University. In your package, you will see a request, basically, it's a tuition scholarship program. Oh, okay, check to see what didn't come in behind me. What they're asking for is just that we partner with Mount Olive University. It does not cost the county anything, but it does give a tuition reimbursement or a tuition cost cut for our employees if they so choose to go through Mount Olive University. It is a 10% reduction in the cost for school if, if we become a quote-unquote corporate partner with Mount Olive University. Again, not an additional cost. Our attorney does have some minor changes he wants to see in the agreement, especially under the indemnification section in Section K, but have him revise that. But we would recommend moving forward with this as a nice benefit for our employees.
Motion to approve of the changes you mentioned. Because take out the indemnity that the county would give them, and since you're not giving them one, I wouldn't ask them to give you one.
Well, that's part of my motion. How about that?
Motion's been made, any discussion?
There's no, nothing in small print hid in here where it's going to cost the county anything?
Nothing.
Okay.
I asked that question to.
All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand.
Not when you take.
Thank you. All right. Do we want to do Catch a Glimpse or the Architect Busman first?
Let me make a motion on that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. The Facilities Committee has met and approved issuing this and make that recommendation to the full board. So I move that we award the RFQ for Architectural Services for the Adaptive Reuse of Property Located at 210 Dixie Trail, Gozover, North Carolina, to Skinner-Farlow-Kerwin Architects.
In, Ms.?
As form of a motion.
Right. If I could state, what this motion is doing is, we sent out the request for qualifications. If I could state, what this motion is doing is, we sent out the request for qualifications, and we have interviewed the three companies as listed in your agenda packet. This is not approving the scope of work, we have not approved a contract yet, so that would be the next step, will be to go back and negotiate exactly what is in that scope of work, what exactly we're getting from, and what exactly the cost will be at that point. So, this just authorizes staff and our attorneys to go back and negotiate what that scope of work is, what the cost is, what the timeframe is.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
The, the scope of work for this request for qualifications, there is a scope of work, because I asked, this is the first time that I have seen the Ashwood document, we approved it by a head nod in November, but none of us commissioners, and it's not in the minutes that it was ever presented in any form to this board. I got this from asking Carol for this information. And it says here specifically, and there is a scope of work, because when it says this is the criteria, then it says scope of work. The key that I have, the questions that I have, is that there was a big, there was a big deal about the use of this building as to whether the Health Department was gonna go or not. Well, that's not an issue here, as far as my questions are concerned. My questions are, is that now that I see what the scope of work, and it is scope of work, it says so right here, that I have suggestions, because we haven't been allowed to do this as a board, to ask questions of this Facilities Committee, to ask questions about this, to ask questions to the architect that we're thinking about approving. My point is, is that that building can be used, I feel like, that what this criteria is saying is not utilizing that building to its fullest potential, doesn't take the Health Department out of the picture. So, my amendment to this motion to approve today is to do what I asked before Christmas. We need to be, instead of this doing, doing it behind closed doors or through a committee, if we're just gonna take the Facilities Committee's recommendation, and none of us other commissioners ever see the content, that means that we, as a DSS board, can do what we want to, and then bring to the commissioners after the fact. The bottom line is, is that I would like to, for us, I'm gonna make an amendment to Mr. Daughtry's motion, is to net, put it on the agenda for our next meeting, net in two weeks, that we have a work session on this, on this subject, along with the potential architect here, because I have questions that I need to ask the architect. Don't use the excuse that we don't have criteria here, because these people had to come up, they had to have some criteria in order to do what they did. So, I am making, I'm making an amendment to the motion to put it on our agenda in two weeks. We haven't had a work session since the last, I guess, budget meeting last year. Let's be open with this, and talk about it, and get all the questions answered. That's my amendment.
All right, so we have an amended motion, is any discussion on amended motion?
Yep, Mr. Chairman. We all agreed that we saw the best need of this property as being to have it renovated for the use of DSS, where we would bring DSS all under one roof. That has been the request of our director, and, well, we can't do that without hiring an architect, and that's why we submitted the RFQ, we vetted those, and made a selection. And that is what we're recommending to this board. So, it's not basically determining where we're gonna be putting offices and that type of thing, it's actually selecting the architect. Once the architect is selected, I agree, we need to have work sessions to actually interact with that architect, to make sure we're all in agreement with the final product, project is, or the full scope of work, should I say. So, I'm sorry, there's a misunderstanding, but it's just basically to hire the architect, and then this board would actually be asking him questions, bringing him in, and working with him to develop the overall schematics of the development. Am I correct?
You are, and I don't think there would be any problem having an architectural firm come in and ask those questions in a couple of weeks, to make sure that everybody is on that same page.
But you gotta have an architect in order to ask the questions.
We had to go through the process first to narrow it down to a firm, and again, you're exactly, there is a scope in the request for qualifications, but it was a scope of what we thought. And again, right now, that request for proposal, until we sign a contract with the architectural firm, we can change the scope at any time. So, we are not married to that scope right there. That was to give them a framework of what we were looking for, what we thought we wanted, and now we're going back and kind of funneling that down to exactly what we're wanting, and putting on paper, and having a contract, so we can move forward.
Well, that's not entirely true, as far as my interpretation of this. When we did a head nod, there was other commissioners that were concerned about where the Health Department was gonna go. No one ever said, I've been asking this since November, we need to decide where the Health Department's gonna go. Has anybody ever said anything about where the Health Department's gonna go? Well, let me say this, when this, when this went out on December 4th, this criteria to, for, scheduled on this architect, it says specifically here, on November 15th, for example, it says that the county would like to adapt and reuse this facility to house our Department of Social Services. The county would need 240 offices and blah, blah, blah. Someone had already decided before this went out for qualifications, where the Health Department was gonna go. Somebody had decided, and no one ever came to, I asked in closed session, I asked to say, hey, look, what are we gonna do with the Health Department? My point is, is that the Health Department, and I'm gonna take the time, since this has been open, I'm gonna take the time to say what I think needs to happen here, for the taxpayer of Wayne County, if nobody else. Why in the world would we take a 78,000 square foot building, use the front of it for all of DSS, and leave the back open for whatever? We use it for this word out there, that might be for storage or whatever. If I had have seen this before it went out, it needs to be, it needs to be clarified before it goes out for requests for qualifications, because it is a scope of work. Why, what would, what would happen if we do, and I have information here, I have analysis, if we take the west side of that building and do exactly like we talked about with DSS, add the 20,000 square feet, because it doesn't hold water, what I was told in closed session, that if we add that 20,000 square feet in the floodplain, that we're gonna have to upgrade the rest of the building. That don't hold water. I checked with the city engineers, I checked with the state. If you do not, if your renovation project is not over 50% of the value of the building, not the land, but the value of the building, you don't have to do anything to the existing building to bring it up the floodplain, but there's a way around that. If it is over 50%, you divide it up into two or three different projects. The bottom line is, is that my suggestion was, since DSS can get reimbursement, and I've got some figures ran from DSS, that says that we can get up to a 64, 64% reimbursement on the renovations, the cost of renovation. Why wouldn't we take the west side of that building, which we know we can do, add 20,000 square feet, take the, take the additional square foot that DSS needs out of the existing 78,000, and leave the east side of that building completely open and undeveloped for future departments of Wayne County, where it could be useful offices, or any other project that we might see fit? That would have been my suggestion, if I had have seen this RFQ before it went out, but I didn't see it. The key is, is that we, in my opinion, are not, if we're in the budget situation that we're saying we're in this year, why in the world would we look at every option, not only now, but 10 years out, when I'm not here? Why would we not look at, at least taking a look at it? So, my point is this, yeah, if we vote on this criteria, to me, that's gonna be it, because these people looked at the criteria based on, I'm saying, if we're gonna approve this, I would like to see it added now, before we approve this architect, that they would look at the possibility of using the original design and talk that we did in closed session to put DSS on the west side of the Bustman Building, which would leave the balance of that building to be utilized, because it's a great building. It don't need to be used for storage, or record keeping, or anything else. We can use that for possibly other projects, if we're in a budget situation. So, that would have been, well, I would have suggested if the commissioners had seen this before it went out, we were not privy to this, and that's the only reason that I'm bringing it up now, is that we need to go ahead and do what we asked to do, and whether the Health Department moves out there or not, it doesn't matter. We still can have the same cost savings in the future, if we look at renovating the balance of that building versus building new. And if we're in a budget situation, we need to look at it, and that's where I'm at. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, for the sake of trying to find the middle road of where I would always love for us to end up, when the discussion first came about the utilization of that building, and my colleague, John Bell, I think was the first one to look at, asked the question, if it was feasible to utilize that building for DSS and Board of Health. But John also has a notorious habit of reminding us that four votes or five votes to go forward with something is what we would do. In the early stages, I was probably leaning towards the use, the utilization of that property for both of those, but as it turned out, the way that I interpret this is, that the RFQ was designed to get the information we need to develop, all the specs and so forth and so on. I haven't seen what Mr. Mayor was alluding to. I serve on the DSS board, and on the Board of Health, and I listen to concerns about the utilization of that building. I would never expect that we would leave a building and not have some use down the road, because as we evolve, buildings need to be used for various things, and although DS, the Board of Health may not go out there, and it doesn't look like it is, we use the word head nod, head nod with the move forward with DSS, they are absolutely, sounds like, thrilled to be going out there. I'm for, and I would appeal to my colleague on my left, to withdraw his amendment motion, so that we can move forward with this process, because I don't see that as nailing the door shut on what the total building would be used for. And, I wouldn't want to upset Board of Health, but if they're not ready to go out there, some future down the road is when they'll go someplace, and we don't know where that someplace is, yet, but it'll be discussed by us or some other board that replaces us. So, I'm not, I'm not deterred from moving forward today, because I don't think that's going to keep us from looking at how that building may be further utilized, but I would not want to use this discussion to somehow or another say, we're not moving forward until the Board of Health goes out there. I want us to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, I call the question in regards to the amendment, so we can move on.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. The, and that's fine, it takes four votes, Mr. Bell, and I don't have, I don't have a problem with that, but I will tell you that if we approve this, if we approve this, it would be a sad day for Wayne County, because I and other commissioners that had concerns do not have the opportunity to ask the pertinent questions. I have a complete analysis in whether the DSS move, I mean, whether the Health Department moves out there or not. I was gonna give this out, but it's gonna stay right in my possession, because the taxpayers of Wayne County can save, if we do, if we move Health Department and DSS, I've got all brand new figures, versus building a new, tearing down the old CIB, we can save $18,120,000 with the reimbursements that DS can get. Now, having said that, having said that, the only thing that I'm asking is, is that we look at the use of that building, not to move Health Department out there, but we can get these same benefits if we use it for any other department. Mr. Attorney, let me ask you a question. If I go along with this vote today, I want to know, because every other time that there's been a change in criteria on architects or anyone else, we've had to do an amendment to the criteria and then go back out for another process. Is that, would that be the case here today?
Based on what Commissioner Daughtry was saying, if you adopt the, his motion without yours, he's still going to have a work session, so you would have an opportunity to talk to the architect about what he's doing before an actual contract is signed.
Okay, so, if we, if we were to say, if we approve this today, and then we meet with the architect and say, look, we would like to add to looking at building the 20,000 square foot on the west side and taking the rest of the building, build DSS on the west side of this building, leave the other side vacant, no renovations whatsoever, that would not change, that would not change anything with this architect.
The board would be able to make that decision, yes, sir.
And, yeah, I think the most important thing what we're asking is, what the committee did was looked at the qualifications of the architect, and see if they were qualified to do what we were considering.
Right.
So, through the interview process, we came back with the firm of Skinner-Farlow-Kerwin out of Raleigh, that were the most qualified, has worked with DSS and other public agencies. Again, what we're asking the board at this time is saying, let us move forward, you are accepting that recommendation of the architectural firm, now let us move forward and work with them on, number one, a firm proposal, a scope of work, and exactly what the cost and what the outcomes we are looking for. So, that's, and again, that's really what the, what you have, was the framework, and again, that framework changes. But what we are looking at now, just if you will allow us to move forward to begin negotiations, because we've not let any architectural firm know.
Right.
We wanted that, that's a board decision to move forward with any discussion about how to move forward. So, if it is approved today, what we would do is contact the architectural firm, ask them to come in a couple of weeks, let them be aware of some of the questions that may be asked of them, and then we can have that discussion and work session.
But you have to have an architect in front of you to ask the questions. But you have to have an architect in front of you to ask the questions, and we cannot have an architect unless we approve the RFQ. So, we're putting the cart before the horse. We've got to approve an architect.
Yes, yes, we can, yes, we can have an architect, because this board has never even talked to the architect, but I will withdraw my motion, okay? I will withdraw my motion, hold on a second. But I want to add an amendment to this vote today, is that let's go ahead and include opening this criteria up to looking at adding the 20,000 square feet on the west side and utilizing half of that building for DSS, leave the other half of that building with nothing there for further use, because it's a shame to take all the front of that building and use the back for storage and junk. That's, I, I will go along with what we're talking about, we can add that now to the criteria, and I will agree to, to vote to move forward, but let's, let's go ahead and get it settled now. That can be added to the criteria.
Mr. Bell, would you come?
Yes, I'd just like to make a quick observation about Dixie Trail. I hope this board, in the future, will not let any department start to dictate where they're going to move. That's our responsibility. I think that's where we got into a mess by having departments to come up and say, "Oh, no, we don't want to go out there." Well, the only thing that the department can do is submit their resignations. They can't make a decision as to where they're going to live for the next few years, not when it comes to county government, that's our responsibility. So, let's don't let them get back into this in the future.
Mr. Chairman.
Telling us that they don't want to go. Now, we, we're going to save the county a lot of money by moving both departments out on Dixie Trail. They work with the same people, Social Services and Health Department work with the same people, so it wouldn't have been a big issue. But we got into this thing about, well, I don't think we want to go out there, because the building sort of looked like a warehouse. But anyway, I just wanted to say that, it, I just never seen it done this way before.
Mr. Page.
I don't disagree with John's point already, and I've said all along, but we've got to move forward to get the architect in here to do this. Wherever the money is most feasible and economically feasible is what I'll vote for. Now, if it can be added on out there, great, if it can't, then we've got to look at other options, but we won't know until we get them sitting up. And I don't mind you asking the same questions and bringing them up, but we've got to have the architect here to tell us. You see what I'm saying? But if it, if it leads to that being the best place financially, I'll be voting for that. But if it doesn't, then I won't.
I call, I call for a vote, because here's the key, I have an amendment, Mr. Parker, that, that I, that I word that okay, as far as adding to this? We can add to this criteria now. If we're going to be all-inclusive here, why don't we go ahead and do it now, and we don't have to worry about what we're going to look at in the future? If the Health Department don't go, so be it. Mr. Parker.
That's my understanding that your amendment was to add to the scope of having the architect consider whether or not to add 20,000 square feet of new construction to, to when it's, when he comes in and discusses it, so y'all can discuss with him whether that should be done.
That's right, and also study what the, the reimbursements are going to be, which are more than what I initially thought. We need, I would like for us to look at that, and that way we can start the reimbursement process. But that is, that is my motion, and it's, and it's fair, and it should not be a problem for anyone on this board.
I just want to ask one question, because it sounds a little bit.
We're getting to me as well.
All right. I just want to ask this question. If we agree that that 20,000 square feet that Mr. Mayo was talking about, aren't we saying that we are deciding at this point, who is going out there additionally to DSS? Are we, are we throwing that in as a left-hand?
What I heard.
Hold on just a minute.
What I heard the motion to be was that it would be a discussion to consider, not to do.
That's correct.
And that, that I think is.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the, the main use, the, the full use of that building, leave the left side vacant. That way, there's opportunities, and I say this in my analysis, which I was never able to present, I say this, this is, we're going to get the same benefit no matter who moves on that side of the building. So, why won't we utilize that property to its fullest, rather than taking DSS and scattering it across the whole front, and then using the back of it for whatever? That's the only question that I had.
But isn't that what the architect is going to do when he comes, is to give us, to give us a, what the whole building would be used for without prejudging?
No, no, because the criteria here that was sent out doesn't say that. The only thing it says in here, and you've got a copy of this, because I requested it on your email, none of us have, had received this until three days ago, and it says specifically that DSS is the only one that's going to move out there, which is fine. The problem I've got is, is that we're not looking at the full use of that building and splitting it up and making a viable situation on the east side for another department of this county, where we can use it for county offices or whatever we need to use it for in the future.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with what Commissioner Mayo has brought up, because that is the whole purpose, and that is to ask all those questions of the architect, and to try to make the best use of the building. Now, I don't know why all of this has become such a hot issue today, but at any rate, all we're trying to do is to hire an architect, so that we can discuss with him what the best use of that building is. So, if that's the case, I have no problem.
All in favor of the amended motion by Commissioner Mayo, please signify.
I thought he was through the.
He put some conditions in there.
He did, the first one, then put a second one there, about the 20,000 square foot.
And we'll consider that, sure.
And I think our attorney is good with it, that's all I want, but it's, it's good.
Do you need to read that again, that amendment?
Just so that, that the architect would be asked to consider adding the 20,000 square feet and to consider the reimbursements therefor.
And, and we can put for DSS, if you want to do, I mean, DSS is going to go.
This guy leave it open as it is, we go along, there'll be some more things we won't add to it, I'm sure.
Sure.
So, all in favor, signify, raise your right hand, please.
That's amended the motion, now you need to vote on the motion as amended.
Let's hire the architect.
So, so moved.
Mr. Kamara, so moved, all in favor, please, signify, raise your right hand. Are we squared?
Yes, sir.
I think we are.
Thank you.
I know I raised my hand twice.
And I'm not sure about the first time.
That's Catch a Glimpse.
Welcome to Catch a Glimpse for January 2019, produced by Wayne County Public Affairs. In December, the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce hosted the Goldsboro Christmas Parade. We had our broadcast with Jeff Holtz and Kate Daniels. Also in December, we produced Christmas greetings from all the Wayne County Commissioners and staff. Also in December, we covered the Board and History Program at the Wayne County Public We filmed a new episode of Cooking with Michelle, where we learned how to make Tuscan bean soup. And we sat down for an interview with representatives from NC Works to find out how local residents can get help finding a job. The Maxwell Center started their 2019 marketing campaign, and we helped them by producing a promo video. The Wayne County Public Library hosted a locally raised event for local authors, and we sat down with a couple of authors to find out more about the event. We covered the swearing-in ceremony for Sheriff Larry Pierce, and an open house event for the Peggy M. Seager Senior Center. We also streamed live the 2018 Wayne County State of the Community, and hosted a gingerbread A few of our marketing efforts in December focused on the animal shelter adoptions, Christmas cheer to foster children in Wayne County, and billboard and radio advertisements against drunk driving. And to wrap up 2018, we produced a Christmas video that was dedicated to the men and women that work in law enforcement, first responders, and dispatchers that have to work on Christmas. This has been Catch a Glimpse for January 2019. We'll see you again next month.
I've spoken way too much today, so, but no, just to let you know, we are excited about the new year. We're looking forward and making sure that if you have any suggestions or agenda items you want to see on our goal-setting retreat, to let us know, we'll make sure to get that included, and if you need any pre-work done before that, just let us know, and we'll make sure you have that information.
Next Tuesday's 22nd.
Yes, sir.
At the Maxwell.
Twenty, 29.
29.
29.
We had to move it.
Yeah, we had a event that was at the Maxwell Center we had to work around. It was a pay.
Say the date again, please.
The 29th.
January 29.
January 29, yes, sir.
What time we starting?
10:00 a.m.
10?
Yes, sir.
I know that's changed.
No, sir, you'll have some snacks and you'll have lunch, but you'll have to eat breakfast on your own.
Packing abs.
Commissioner Daughtry.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Today, I want us all to pause and reflect on a workhorse for Wayne County, that's Senator Pate. Senator Pate has been ill for several months. I understand his health is restoring somewhat, but he decided yesterday to retire. But in looking back on Senator Pate's career and his active representation for Wayne County, Pitt County, Lenore County, all of eastern North Carolina, that goes all the way back to 1995, really some history there. But he, I believe, served four terms in the North Carolina House. Prior to that, he was the mayor of Mount Olive, and then he went on to the Senate, and I believe he, this was his fifth term in, in the Senate. But I think we ought to recognize, because I can really relate to what I'm about to say, there's a lot of sacrifices that public officials, really for their home, their families, in order to provide that service. And a lot of times, as many of us are aware, it's a thankless job. Louis has undoubtedly served us well, so I want us all to remember him, and remember him in our prayers, so that his health will be restored. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kamara.
I would like to join my colleague on my right to say something about Mr. Pate. I first met him when he was getting ready to run for mayor of Mount Olive. I was supporting another candidate, and he won, and I found him to be a tenacious candidate, campaigner, and of course, he did battle with other candidates in Wayne County, oppositions, and formidable. Just because you don't necessarily agree with all the things that a person may officially vote on, doesn't mean that you don't respect what they do. And for, for Mount Olive and the other areas, I always thought he had us in mind, because I've heard people say the different things, that he's done for them beyond the official position. So, it is a thank you, and we, and we all join together hoping that his health gets better, so that we can see him walking, doing his actions, walking with his wife, which I watched him do for the last 25 years or so, riding Mount Olive. So, I join you in that. Let me share with you, I think somewhere around the middle of, around the middle of December, late, late, late November, I got a call from a, a lady in Dudley, of Hispanic origin, and she's been here maybe three months ago, and spoke, maybe in the four-minute opportunities to say something, but, and, and, and I apologize, because these phones, these smartphones outsmart me when I want to go back to try to find someone's name, and I didn't bring my notes with me, so I'm going to mess up her name, but I think her name is, is, is a little, her first name starts with L. And I apologize to her, as she may see this. But let me get to what it is that she wants, and I'm glad that Wayne Community College, raise your hand, hello, good to see you this morning, thank you that you're here. She asked me to come up and speak with, with the community, and so I did one particular night, I think maybe somewhere around the 17th of December, I believe, and there was an event, and if I mess this up, I apologize to this, but I think it's pronounced Passada, and it's a, it's a, it's something that they do leading up to Christmas, having to do with the Christmas birth of Jesus and all that, and, but we didn't do much of that, because they, I got there, and we, she introduced me, and she was interpreting, and so after I bragged about who I was and my children and all that, I asked them to ask me questions that they were interested in. And, and, and manager, let me say this, I think she also alluded to that when she was here, that area of Wayne County is interested in recreational activities for their children and their community at large. And she said, "Why couldn't they have some of those boys' clubs and things like that?" And I sort of got a whiff of that's what, which we're going, and so I was prepared to let her know that municipalities provide the recreational kinds of things in Wayne County, not the county of Wayne. Goldsboro City, Azares, Mount Olive, Azares, and the other small communities, municipalities. And I let her know that it was, Dudley would have to develop a different arrangement, so they could tax their citizens and, and get the kinds of things that she was talking about. And I say, I say this out loud, so that anyone can hear this, and I, and especially the school system. I encouraged her, my veteran colleague out here, you have an opportunity to use the school situations, but you have to get permission and provide your insurance coverage and so forth and so on, to be able to use the school buildings. And I think, I know back in the day it happened, and I'm sure the school buildings are still available to be used by groups, but there are stipulations and things that you have to go to, because everything has to be appropriate. And so, I let them know that in that community, you've got Brogdon Primary, Brogdon Middle, Southern Wayne is close to where they're talking about, and if they want to stretch on down into Mount Olive, there's schools there, and any school in the county, they have an opportunity to use it. That needs to be said, but there are directions, interacting with the central office, providing proof of security and insurance coverage and so on. And I think they came away pretty much satisfied with that answer. To Wayne Community College, they have a, they have a nice metal building, that the back of it, where we were at, is a pretty good open space, and I would say that it was maybe 30 by 60 or something to that effect, so it was a pretty good space. And, and this is, this is, when they start going in the direction of what Wayne Community College may do for them, as I have spoken to you all, when I've been on the campus with you all, I'm a great, I'm a proponent of community-based skill activity. I just leave it that broad. And so, I have advocated that broadly, but now, because the Hispanic community specifically asked me to come up. And so I have advocated that broadly, but now because the Hispanic community specifically asked me to come up, I vocalize for everyone, but specifically for them. They do a large part of the vegetable picking and those kinds of things. And because I got started in my real work career as a skilled body repair painter, I'm an advocate of, of the skill opportunities. And some people that know me real well know that's where I hang my hat specifically. So I would like for us to have that further conversation. My cell phone number is 919-922-0398. And I would like for us to discuss that Wayne Community College. And now to the county. Through our county extension, there was a concern, or at least a request, that some opportunities be provided to them at their site. And it's easy to say, well, we can provide all these things up here at the Maxwell Center and so forth and so on. But sometimes it's just not convenient. I mean, you know, work all day and transportation is an issue. But I, I would like for, and pardon me if I'm not, Michelle Estrada, isn't she over the, they specifically talked about some creative cooking and so forth, and, and someone to help them learn more about just things around that nature, Mr. Chairperson, Mr. Manager. So Wayne Community College, county extension, appeal to us, let's make sure that we do not lose, leave a population out. And promises made, promises kept. So I said I was going to make sure that I did something along that. So please, let's be in touch, Ms. Wayne. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr.
Appreciate your behalf.
I agree with everything that's been said about Senator Pate. One of the things that I found out early on about Senator Pate is that he is a person of deep faith. He and I talked about faith many, many times. I see Senator Pate, and I don't know of any instances where he ever participated in what's traditionally called dirty politics. I don't think he was that kind of person. He was who he was. He, he had an opinion, he represented everyone equally. And I think all of us should have the same motto that I think that Senator Pate has. I believe that Senator Pate came in clean and he's going out clean. I think that's something that all of us should shoot for as elected officials. I do truly believe that about Senator Pate. Attended the Economic Development Summit that was out at the Maxwell Center, that Mark Pope was there. That was a, that was a very, very good summit. Economic development, I feel good about Wayne County. Yeah, we got a, you know, it's a fighting scratch, you know how it is, you know? But that's the way it is. I feel good about our overall county. I'm a little bit concerned about, like all of us, that the quarter cent sales tax didn't pass. But you know what? I think several commissioners have said it. We just need to buckle up and tighten down, work what we got. Well, that's what I used to have to do as a sharecropper on the farm. So that's good, that's good to do. Lastly, last Friday, we had a, a teleconference call with the NC East Alliance. And I know that the county is, is looking at whether we want to participate with the NC East Alliance. And I won't expel on that. What I will say is that there is a tremendous interest. I'm talking about almost a monthly basis, business prospects that's coming out of South Africa. NC East Alliance has got a huge number of requests. So that seems to be in our total area that we're looking at outside of the United States. Southern Africa seems to be the, the target area for where you can pull industries and businesses. So having said that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bell. I didn't have my hand up, just. Just. Okay. I don't have a, a report because I've been, as y'all saw my schedule from, that I passed out last month. But I would like to make a brief comment about what Commissioner Kamori said. I serve on the Latino Council. We send our stuff to the Hispanic community monthly, post stuff at the library, and keep them informed as to everything that's going on. I think what they want is a separate little deal over there. But some of the stuff that they're asking for is already in existence. All they got to do is attend. And then they hold stuff at the, before they moved from the Wayne Center, they was holding events once a quarter, inviting all the Hispanic community to come over and participate. And so far, we only get just a handful. So there is some ongoing, I didn't want the, the county manager to reinvent the wheel because these things are already going on. They just need to participate. Commissioner Kamori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to kind of chime in on Mr. Kamori's comments on Wayne Community College. We have some great things going on at the college. We have, by being on that board, we, we see the figures. Our Hispanic population out there is a big part of the student there. Our minority numbers are good. Other nationalities are good. Like I said, we've got some good things going on. Dr. Walker's doing a fantastic job, but he's just the leader. The people under him is what is getting the job done, the faculty and the staff. We've got good people out there. And, you know, any, anyone that wants an education, if they just see the right people, it's available. They would bend over backwards in any way to help them get that education. Also, I've had the pleasure of going to several of the fire department's installation of officers. It was an honor to be asked to go. We've got some great fire departments and they're, they're providing a great service. The County Firefighters Association Installation of Officers is tonight at Lane Tree. Most of y'all should have got an invitation, hope you did. If you didn't, please let me know. Also, there's one thing that's going on in the county that, that's really bothering me. We've had some terrible accidents, automobile accidents in the last few weeks. In several fatalities. And I'm not a social media person. But everyone is listening, and Steve, please pass this on. Social media, if you come up on an accident, a bad accident, please save you sharing what you see and what you take. Let our first responders, our law enforcement, our EMS, the fire, let them do their job. And especially where you have fatalities, you know? It takes time for, for our first responders to do their job, notify families and all. And it's, it just bothers me to see some of the things that, I mean, I don't do it, but I got a wife that does. And, and, and it's, it's, it just bothers me to see some of the things that's on social media, there's, there's accident scenes and all, that the authorities has not had time to notify the people that, that needs to be notified. And I got some real strong words for anyone that would do that, but I can't use them with the cameras rolling. But you're a, you're, you're a lowlife if you go, if you do things like that. It's just, it's, it's just, it's uncoolful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be ready because I know we've got a 12 o'clock lunch at the Farm Bureau, and I hate for us to be late because they always feed us real well. Little bit said more than much said about Senator Pate. He's helped me both in my career before I became a commissioner and afterwards. I will miss going to his office and asking his secretary if my daddy's in, because she always gets a kick out of that. But he's, he's a great guy, got a great name too, by the way. The economic summit, Mark Exel, those things can be really, really dry. But those guys, they made it fun, they really did. And I got a lot out of it. So I hope we can do something like that again. And I too was able to swear officers at the Sauce and Fire Department. But other than that, you know, it was holidays and I kind of missed not working. I didn't realize how long, even when I could get bored from not having anything to do. Of course, it rained every day during the holidays, so, anyway, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
And I mean many things to Senator Pate, of his hard work dedication to the state of North Carolina and Wayne County as well. We're about to go in closed session for the purpose of what?
Location of industries and businesses in Wayne County and to consult with an attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege.
Do we have a motion?
Salute.
Motion is made, all in favor, right hand.